All right, let's proceed.
Good morning, Your Honors. The question presented to the amicus was whether General Laws Chapter 71, Section 41, precludes post-termination or post-retirement benefits such as lifetime health insurance. The answer to that question, based upon the plain language of the statute, the legislative intent of the statute, and prior decisions by this court, is yes. The statute cannot be more clear that a contract under 7141 cannot exceed six years for the same reason the court invalidated Evergreen clauses in the BHA case. The court should not enforce the reimbursement clause here.
But isn't there a difference? The contract here did not extend more than six years. Mr. O'Neill is not presently the school superintendent. You're arguing that if there is any accrued benefit that extends more than six years, the statute forbids it, which would include anything with regard to pension, anything with regard to retirement health, anything with regard to any agreement to pay some amount of money over time.
Not with respect to pensions, Your Honor, because pensions are governed by Chapter 32, which is a separate standalone statute. And the language of section, or excuse me, Chapter 71, Section 41 doesn't specifically state employment contract. It states contract.
What about severance, which is specifically mentioned? What if you had a severance payment that went out over years? You couldn't do that?
In my, no, Your Honor, you could not. Generally, what you see in the employment context with severance payments is that there's some situation in which the employment term is cut off short, and then there's some lump sum payment made to the individual as they, as they leave the door.
May be or may not be, but I, I mean, isn't there a fund, I mean, just to follow up with Justice Gans's question, isn't there a fundamental difference between a contract that is in place here, an employment contract as superintendent, and a benefit flowing from a shorter contract that actually is realized after the fact, after the end of that contract?
I apologize, Justice Botzford.
You, in other words, you call this the contract lasting more than six years, when in fact, the contract obviously is over. This is a benefit that continues beyond six years.
Again, I do not believe that it is a benefit. I believe that the language of the reimbursement clause requires performance on the part of the school committee and the town to make payments to Mr. O'Neill for the rest of his life. And that extends the obligation or the terms of the contract for the rest of Mr. O'Neill's life.
But it could have been negotiated in a different way. You could have negotiated, or he could have negotiated with the town for a trust, in effect, to be set up, or a fund to be set up, so that out of that fund, his health insurance premiums could be paid for, well, if he had actuarially worked it out correctly, perhaps to the end of his life. And that would have been a commitment of funds, a payment of funds, even within his six-year or seven-year period of contractual employment.
I would say so long as those payments were made during the term of the six-year contract, if it was six years, then that wouldn't be repugnant to 7141. But what this does is that it requires the committee to make these payments, again, for years and years and years. It would be really.
So there was a mutual misunderstanding. Why don't we just send it back for some calculation by an actuary to see how much money would have to be put into a fund in order to effectuate the purpose of the parties, the intent of the parties?
I don't believe there was a misunderstanding, Justice Bina.
You mean that the town was not intending to pay health insurance for premiums for this man?
Well, there's already a statute on the books, Chapter 32B, which provides municipal employees and their retirees with health insurance subsequent to the term of their employment.
Is he eligible for that?
No, he's not eligible for that because he didn't work the period of time under the regulation that the town had set up for purposes of being eligible as a retiree. But the town was not involved in the negotiations that resulted in the execution of this contract that included the reimbursement clause. The committee was involved with their committee counsel, and Mr. O'Neill was unrepresented. And.
So he takes the, he takes the, he suffers because the school committee, on behalf of the town, committed to this? Is that what you're saying?
Unfortunately, Justice Botzford, yes. Mr. O'Neill was bound at his peril to know the extent of the authority of the public officer with whom he dealt. In Adalian Brothers, which is 323 Mass. 629, this court stated that persons dealing with a municipality must take notice of limitations placed upon the contracting power of the municipality, are bound by those contracting powers, and cannot recover upon contracts attempted to be made in violation of them. There are procedural safeguards that are in place. And this court took it one step further in Richard D. Kimble versus City of Medford, 340 Mass. 727, a 1960 case, in acknowledging that any other rule, however appealing it may be in an individual case, would, in the long run, render statutory safeguards governing contracting powers worthless, and it would be another instance of a hard case-making, bad law.
So your argument is that if there had been a six-year contract with Mr. O'Neill, that would be fine, of course, correct?
Yes.
But if that contract said that upon the conclusion of the six years, we will pay you a severance over the course of two months, that that severance is not payable because that would mean that the contract now is for six months plus the two months for the severance?
Well, that would be something that he earned during the period in which he was employed, and it's something that's payable at that point in time.
And why is this any different? Didn't he not, this was negotiated? It was understood that he would not be eligible for the town retirement benefits, and this was agreed to. Why did he not earn this just as much as he would have earned the severance that you described?
One reason Justice Gans did not earn it is because the statute that permits a committee and a superintendent to contract does not permit the school committee to enter into a contract that provides for supplemental insurance benefits. And you can glean that from the legislative history and how 7141 came into being. Now, prior to 1990, 7141, the last paragraph of 7141 simply stated that a committee and a school, and a superintendent may contract for a period not to exceed six years. And in January of 1990, House Bill 3211 was submitted, and it sought to amend Chapter 41, Section 108N, which is the Town Administrator Contract Statute, which permits a town to contract with a town administrator or a town manager. And the bill proposed that the words "school committee and superintendent" be included into that statute. Now, that statute states expressly in the second paragraph that in addition to the benefits provided under 32, which is the pension statute, and 32B, which is the municipal health insurance statute, a town administrator and a town may contract for supplemental retirement and insurance benefits. Now, this proposed, or excuse me, this bill worked its way through the House and Senate, but it was subsequently amended. And in November of 1990, the amendment was that rather than include superintendent and school committee in 41108N, it would be included in 7141. But the term supplemental insurance and retirement benefits was not included in the amendment. And that expresses a clear legislative intent that those supplemental insurance benefits a superintendent would not be eligible for. And it makes perfect sense because.
Let's assume you're right, but he says, "These are not supplemental. These are my only retirement benefits."
Well, the definition of supplemental, Your Honor, supplemental, I look at it as in the place of, and it's a situation in which, yes, he's not eligible.
Supplemental mean above and beyond?
I think, I think it could also mean.
So for you to prevail, we must accept your view that supplemental means that in place of, or in lieu of, as opposed to, in addition to?
Yes, in the place of, he's, in the place of being eligible under 32B, he would be paid this reimbursement for the rest of his life. And it makes sense that, getting back to my point a moment ago, it makes sense that the school committee would not be permitted to contract with the superintendent with respect to supplemental insurance benefits, because those insurance benefits, again, are covered by General Laws Chapter 32, the Comprehensive Municipal Employee Health Insurance Act, which covers retirees and employees. And it occupies the field. It's a local option statute that, once it's accepted, it cannot be revoked, and it permits a city or town to enact regulations that determine eligibility for retirement health insurance.
May I ask, do you really think that's fair? Is it fair to just say to him, "You're out of luck, buddy"?
I would say that that's what the law requires, Chief Justice Ireland. It may be a harsh result, but that's the result, and that's the result from cases that have been issued and decided by this court, stretching way back, as I mentioned, in Adalian Brothers and Richard D. Kimble. And to bind the public, the committee must act within the laws which bind them. And really, whose fault, who's at fault here? It really doesn't matter. Advice was given at some point by the then-committee members, or excuse me, and the committee members at that point relied on that advice. And I think it's important, an important thing for the court to remember is that the money at stake here, it's money of the public, and the public is not stopped by a violation of duty on the part of public officials, no matter how many officials may have been concerned in it, and no matter how long it may have continued. And that's Wormsitt versus Lynn, 184 Mass. 425.
Can I just ask you, if we disagree that Section 71, Chapter 71, Section 41 is, you think it's ambiguous, and we have to go outside of it somehow to understand it, we think it's not ambiguous, and it was enough to authorize the school committee to enter into this kind of a contract, are we then just left with your argument about whether or not it is precluded because it is a commitment from within six years?
Well, there's two portions of the statute, Justice Link. The six-year provision, I don't believe to be ambiguous whatsoever. It calls for six years, much like Chapter 150E, Section 7A, talked about three years.
That's a different statute, right?
No.
7141?
41, okay.
No. 7141 talks about a six-year period, much like 150E, Section 7A, in the BHA case talked about a three-year period. The portion that is ambiguous is that additional section in 71, excuse me, 7141, that talks about other terms and conditions of employment or fringe benefits.
I was referring to the portion that talked about whether or not they had the authority to enter into this kind of a contract. If we find that that is not ambiguous, then it is simply a question of whether or not the obligation extends beyond six years.
That's correct. Yes.
And then that would, and your argument would then be that it's like an Evergreen clause?
Precisely. Again, this court invalidated Evergreen clauses and invalidated contracts, more likely than not, from Provincetown all the way out to Great Barrington, based upon the BHA case. And it found that these Evergreen provisions extend a contract with a union and a city or town beyond the three-year period that's mandated by 150E. We look at the language of the reimbursement clauses doing the same thing.
But don't you see a difference between an Evergreen clause, which says the contract continues while we're negotiating, versus an agreement which says the contract ends and it's over, but there are certain benefits which we have agreed to, which we agree to be paid after the contract terminates?
I look at that as just an issue of draftsmanship, Justice Gans. I look at the reimbursement clause as continuing the contract going forward for the rest of Mr. O'Neill's life. The fact that there's a termination provision in it really doesn't matter. All contracts in the labor and employment field that I see have that Evergreen language, but at the same time have duration language as well.
But we've interpreted many, many contracts that provide, at the conclusion of employment, that may have certain accrued interests, including certain promises not to reveal confidential information. That, we don't say, upon the conclusion of employment, that the employee is now free to reveal confidential information, even though the person had agreed to during the course of the employment. So there's a situation in which we have consistently said that there are terms of an agreement which continue beyond the termination of the agreement. Why is this different?
Well, I think it's different because in this situation, you're dealing with a school committee and a superintendent, and the provisions that the parties can contract for are governed by statutes. And the statute here doesn't talk about confidentiality provision. It talks about terms and conditions of employment that exist during the term of employment. And also in this field, I don't think I can say it enough, is that the law already permits public employees to participate as retirees in health insurance, assuming they meet the eligibility requirements of that city or town.
Follow up. You did say, just to clarify, that if it were a severance, and it were paid after the end of the six-year period, you would see that as something that had accrued as an entitlement during the six-year period, correct?
Yes.
And you don't see that this provision for benefits, which is actually tied to language that says you get so much with every year that you're here, is also not an entitlement that is related to the period, and it increases, right, increases in terms of how many years you're working, you get more of a benefit. Isn't that related to the period of time that he was actually employed? I don't see the difference, frankly. Could you tell me why this is different?
Well, I think the difference is the statute, 7141, the language controls here. And the language of the statute does not permit that type of a benefit to be conveyed to the superintendent from the school committee via a contract.
Counsel, we'll have to leave it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Justice, and thank you, Your Honors.
Mr. Chief Justice, John Driscoll, I represent Robert O'Neill, the plaintiff and appelle in the case. And before I get started, I'd just like to address two things Brother indicated. The issue that my client and the implication of Chapter 108N, or Section 108N of Chapter 41, that he would be eligible for supplemental insurance benefits under Chapter 32 and 32B, has really been addressed by this court. Those two statutes deal with group health and accident insurance. And this court, in Cusi versus Town and Millbury, back in 1993, or '94, I believe, addresses a situation where there was an employee who had been, they lost the HMO coverage, and that employee was then not eligible for the group insurance, and the town passed a bylaw specifically setting up a retired, a health insurance benefit for this employee. That was challenged on the basis that it was precluded by Chapter 32 and 32B, and this court held, no, where the employee was not eligible for that group life insurance, then the town was free to create its own benefit for that employee. So I really think that's a red herring. I don't really think that applies in this case. The other thing my brother indicated, that the employee is charged with making sure that the person he is contracting with has the power to do so. And I think it's clear in this case that, under Chapter 71, Section 41, the school committee is the authority to make this kind of contract. Between Sections 37, 41, and 59 of Chapter 71, it's clear that the legislature intended a broad power of the school committee to contract with a superintendent with all sorts of benefits.
You don't disagree, you just theoretically, that if the school committee, I mean, the issue here is whether this is permissible or not, but if the school committee entered into a, with all the authority that it has, entered into a contract with a superintendent that was clearly in violation of a governing statute, it would be tough for the superintendent. There was nothing that he or she could do.
I agree with that. I do agree with that, but I don't think that's the case in the statute.
I understand that.
This statute allows, or actually, the interplay of the three statutes says that the school committee has the power to hire and fire a superintendent, to fix his compensation, and then to enter into a contract not exceeding six years, which contract may also provide for salary, fringe benefits, and other conditions of employment. And it goes on to say, "including but not limited to," when that was the reference to severance benefits and others. So within the statute itself, it's clear that there are contract provisions that can take place, that can be vested, and then can be performed or enforced after the expiration of a contract.
So how does this, how does this work? Going back to your first argument, looking at 108N, which I know doesn't apply to superintendents, but is it your position that if your client was in fact eligible, because he had worked sufficient years for this benefit, that the contract then couldn't provide supplemental benefits on top of that? If he was eligible for group health insurance, in other words, in his retirement?
No, because I don't believe the statutes are really related. You know, the 108N was passed significantly after, or before, or, I mean, I'm sorry, after the provisions of 7141. I don't think they're related at all. But the fact of the matter is, is that the benefits that he has sought by negotiating the reimbursement clause were not the supplemental benefits of the type that were mentioned in 108N. My reading of that statute would be that the supplemental benefits that are referenced in that statute are benefits that are supplemental to the types of benefits that are set forth in 32 and 32B, which is not the case in our contract and our reimbursement clause. In any event, he wasn't eligible for it because he was three years short of qualifying for the town plan, and he knew that at the time, in 2002, when he started negotiating his contract, he was getting closer to retirement age, he knew, or he suspected that he probably would not fulfill the 10-year requirement by the time his contract terminated, and that's why.
I guess my question to you is, let's assume for a moment that he worked a sufficient period of time for the school committee. His contract was renewed for another six years, and so that he was eligible for group health insurance in retirement and retirement. Could, under Section 41, the school committee negotiate benefits beyond that?
I think they could.
Okay.
I think they could. But in any event, it was not necessary. If he had qualified under the town's retirement, I don't think we'd be here. The argument that.
Because the benefits he would receive under that agreement are actually better than what he's received.
They were actually better. At the time, because his formula locked him into 10% for each year he served, his maximum reimbursement rate was 70%. At the time he retired, the town's reimbursement policy was 80%. So he actually took less than he would have if he had qualified as a 10-year employee. But he never got the chance. In other words, perhaps if he had known that he wasn't going to qualify, and that they would not give him the reimbursement clause, he would have worked three more years.
Could he have negotiated in his contract a provision that said, "For every year I have worked, that will entitle me to two years of service for purposes of group health insurance in the system"?
It's an interesting question. I don't know the answer, Your Honor. He might have been able to unless there was a statute that precluded that, and I'm just not aware of whether there was or whether there wasn't. But unfortunately, that's not what they did. The provision that was negotiated.
It may be fortunately.
Pardon me?
It may be fortunately.
Or maybe fortunately. But the, you know, and again, at the time, he was, he was not represented by counsel. The town and the school committee were represented by counsel. They negotiated this language. And the interesting thing is, is that at the time he gave his notice of retirement, the town then went out, and they got a new superintendent. So certainly, the town's hands weren't tied. The new superintendent was in place before Mr. O'Neill even went out the door. The town asked Mr. O'Neill to move his retirement date up by a few months, which he did. But he did that on the condition that the town acknowledged or confirmed that the rest of his benefits that were listed in the contract would be in full force and effect. And the only benefit that was going to be in full force and effect after Mr. O'Neill left was reimbursement clause. At that time, and it was dated the day he retired, I think it was July 7th or 8th of 2005, they entered into this memorandum agreement where the town indicated that, or signed the agreement, that all of his benefits, and the words that are in there are important, all his benefits guaranteed under his contract would be in full force and effect. So on the day he left, they guaranteed, or they acknowledged that he had certain guaranteed benefits arising out of his seven years of employment, and that was the healthcare reimbursement provision.
Is there anything in the record to indicate what the, what the figure is, or sort of ballpark figure? How much that 70% of the annual reimbursement is for the premium?
Yeah, well, the final judgment, there were damages at the time, it was approximately of past damages, I think it was around $46,000, if I'm not mistaken. And the judgment down below also was for specific performance, so that they would be paid going forward. There's a built-in modifier for the town, however. Obviously, when Mr. O'Neill qualifies for Medicare, his cost of his supplemental insurance, or his Medicaid supplemental insurance, would be much less than what the individual plan would be. In fact, this case has taken so long, Mr. O'Neill now does qualify for Medicare, so that the damages have been self-limiting. And I think down below, there was some problem with the computation of interest on it, but I believe the lower court's decision does have those damages amounts. It's our position that the statute is very clear, that they have authority to enter into this type of contract. If this type of reimbursement clause is not a fringe benefit in a condition of employment, I'm not sure I know what is. Fringe benefits are defined very broadly. I think it's a, it's a well-known term. But there are statutes, one of the workman's comp statutes, I think 152, Section 1, in defining what average weekly wages are or how they're computed, gives a very broad definition of fringe benefits, as does the IRS. I think it's clear that this is a type of benefit that would be included as a, as a fringe benefit. So then the only issue is, back to the question, if they have the power to do it, are they then limited by the six-year term limit? We don't think that's a valid argument at all. There's no holding that this contract extended beyond six years. In fact, the contract that was executed in 2003 terminated in two years, as Judge Gans, I believe, indicated. Mr. O'Neill is not the superintendent. In fact, they had a superintendent in place, as I said before, Mr. O'Neill even left office. The hands of this school committee have not been tied at all. The benefit that they are paying is no different, it's actually less, than they would pay for all of their 10-year employees. And all of their 10-year employees have a lifetime benefit, so that it's not unusual for the town to be on the hook, so to speak, for this type of payment. The BHA case, I don't think is applicable really at all. In that case, a collective bargaining agreement, which, you know, plays out the full panoply of labor management relations and an Evergreen clause, in that case, that moves that whole contract, all its terms and conditions forward, is not what this case is about. This is an individual superintendent's contract that was negotiated under a broad statutory authority under Chapter 71 that applies just to Mr. O'Neill and does not tie the hands of the school committee or future generations of the school committee.
Not to get too hypothetical, but let's, let's assume that the contract was a six-year contract, but provided that at the end of the contract, Mr. O'Neill would continue to receive his full salary and benefits for another three years. One might say, "Well, okay, you've just committed to pay a lot of money for no services, but that's a contract." Would that be a contract beyond six years?
I don't think it would be. I think in that case, what they would have been determining was that some of his pay that he was worth during the six years was just deferred. If he didn't, if he wasn't required to perform the duties of the superintendent either.
Yeah, I mean, if the contract said, "But if we don't renew this, we will pay you for another three years."
Then I don't think that would extend the contract. It might be found that there was no consideration for that extra three years if he didn't have to work. But I think the better argument would be that if they did that, they must have determined that the value of his services during those six years was worth giving him deferred benefits, that are paid for the three years after the contract. In this case, there's no question that the benefit that is being paid, or sought to be paid, was earned. He worked the seven years. He did everything that he was requested to do. They thought highly enough of him that they issued a series, or entered into a series of five contracts with Mr. O'Neill, and then agreed to negotiate this benefit into his last two contracts to compensate him for the fact that he would not be eligible for that benefit after, after his retirement. It's also our position that the argument that this is against public policy really doesn't apply. I don't know what public policy would be violated by giving Mr. O'Neill the benefit of his bargain, paying him the fruits of his labor, so to speak, for his seven years working for the school system. The public policies that you expressed in BHA really aren't the case here. I think the ruling in BHA said that the three-year term, in the case of collective bargaining agreements, allowed the parties to reassess their collective bargaining representatives, to reassess the terms of their collective bargaining agreement. None of those apply in this case. They also, or the interest was also expressed that you didn't. you didn't want to tie the hands of the successors that would come after. Well, the hands of the school committee certainly weren't tied in this case. As I said, they had a replacement superintendent in no time. And this small benefit that Mr. O'Neill is looking for certainly would not tie the hands unreasonably of the school committee going forward. The public policy that really is probably violated here, however, and it was found in the lower court, when the judge determined that this was a violation of the covenant of good faith and fair dealing, was that when Mr. O'Neill went out the door, they signed an agreement acknowledging that this benefit was going to be adhered to and was going to be paid. He was out of the office for, I believe, a month or two. He sent in his request for reimbursement. They sat on it for five months, despite additional letters and contact from Mr. O'Neill, and then wrote him back a short letter that just said, "Because you're no longer an employee, we don't have to honor our obligation to you. It's not fair. And if there's a violation of public policy in this case, that's the violation." And I'll rest on my brief.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll.